Alright, good evening and welcome to City Council. Um, just a quick note, we are going to be doing a quick urban renewal agency meeting prior to city council. Uh, it really will be quick, I promise that it will only take just few minutes. Um, so with that, uh, Ramiro looks to a roll call for the urban renewal agency. Um, we're calling it to order at six thirty on November fourteen.
Councillor Source.
President.
Councillor Rowan here, Councillor Weller.
Here.
Uh, Councillor Mark Willis.
Yeah.
Councillor Morgan, Councillor Stewes and Councillor Moore.
Here.
Please, thank you.
With that, we have um, meeting minutes, please from the regular meeting on June tenth as well as the work session on September one. Move to the. Move to the true.
I'll move to approve minutes for the regular meeting of six, ten, twenty, twenty five.
Second, we have a motion by also Mark Willis and a second by councillor Core, any discussion? Roll call.
Councillor Source.
Aye.
Councillor Rowan, Councillor Weller.
Alright.
Councillor Mark Willis.
Aye.
Councillor Core.
Aye.
Right, and for the work session on nine, nine, minute twenty five.
Move to approve minutes for the work session of nine, nine, twenty, twenty five.
Second. You have a motion by councillor Mark Willis, a second by councillor Core, any further discussion? Alright, roll call.
Councillor Core.
Aye.
Councillor Mark Willis.
Aye.
Councillor Weller.
Aye.
Councillor Rowan, Councillor Core.
Aye.
Thank you, and we do not have any visceral public comments of the U R A. Um, no unfinished business and so we'll move on to new business.
Yeah, thank you mayor, uh, councillors. So I'm back, um, after the work session to talk about disposition of those three properties in the independence, the remaining properties in the Independence Landing, uh. Uh, project, um, I first I have to apologize, I had hoped to have a letter for you all from our realtors, uh, kind of outlining a regular recommended path forward for, uh. Uh, for kind of during these problems, we weren't able to get together in time, so I'm gonna maybe walk back my staff memo recommendation a little bit to more of a neutral posture and just kind of watch it through. Uh, a little more detail about two, the two possible options. Uh, first off, uh, you know, one option would be to just list the properties for sale. Uh, I think we all are pretty, pretty familiar with what that process works like, the one thing I would mention with that is. Um, in listing it for sale, you would be able to put conditions on the sale, so you could say must be a commercial development, must be a residential development, must be. Uh, must be built and finished within ten years, uh, you know, what have you, you can kind of make conditions on the sale. With the caveat that of course depending on those conditions, you may reduce interest in, in the property. Uh, I do think if, uh, if we weren't moved forward with listing this properties, so for example, the old city hall property when that was sold. Um, that had not necessarily conditions, but sort of opportunities of you're gonna pay the price and then if you do this, it'll get some money back, if you do that, it'll get some money back. Uh, but there was a condition that any purchaser, uh, would have to enter into a development agreement with the city that outlined their. Their path, you know, in fact, you're doing something on property, or doing something with the property. And I think if we were to proceed with, uh, just listing the properties, that would be worth considering, uh, just to try to avoid. The possibility of somebody just kind of buying into land, banking it with no real intention of, of developing. Um, the other option would be, it would be to do more of a development solicitation, this is something we did with the rest of the independence landing properties. Um, we would go together, you know, kind of a, a describing of, of the property as well as the, the city's vision for, for the sites. Um, go out, put it in front of developers, probably do at least one walkthrough where we invite developers to the, to the sites, talk to them about the community, talk to them about the properties. Uh, and it really kind of marketed and then open, open a, uh, sort of a bidding period or, or proposal period where folks can. Respond, uh, to the, the solicitation, you know, where we sort of outline our, our broad goals, visions for the site, if they respond however they. They think they could best fit, uh, our visions with those properties. Uh, you know, respond before the deadline, then there would be a review committee to review the responses, uh, selects the one that, who kind of best fit. You know, the, the community council's vision, uh, that turns into a development agreement and moves forward that way. Uh, previously when we did this, uh, we had, uh, with the, the review committee was made up of, uh, several staff and a couple of city councillors. I think that would make sense to do again if it was to happen that way. Uh, and mayor would, so we'd be the one who could nominate, uh, councillor to herself to sit on that. Uh, in terms of costs, uh, we already have templates, uh, from, of development solicitation from the past, so the way I would do it is I would essentially take those templates, turn them into. This new solicitation, um, the real estate brokers, I mean, their job is already to kind of put properties in front of developers. So there might be a little bit of work for them to do in the sense of organizing a developer tour or something a little more. Um, you kind of beyond the normal scope of marketing the property. Uh, but what I would do is try to put a limit on, you know, kind of the amount of time or expense they would, they would undertake with that. Uh, and, uh, real realistically, I would look for that to keep that under a thousand dollars. Uh, so that's kind of how, um, we would, I would, you know, kind of seek to approach that. Um, I think if I'm comparing the two options, really one is more descriptive, you know, it's sort of you're listing this property for sale, if you put conditions, if you will do this or you will not do that. Whereas a development solicitation is more of a, a more flexible, like kind of here's, here's the broad picture of what we'd like to see and it allows the developers to respond. And, and sort of identify themselves in this way, that they think they could fit that vision. Uh, and then I think the only other thing I would add in terms of contrast of the two is, um. In terms of development solicitation, I think that gives the developers a little more certainty about timing to put their plans together, you know, if you list a property for sale. You know, it may take, may take some time to sort of really come up with a good, a good plan or what you want to do with something and. If there's a chance somebody comes in and makes an offer, you know, kind of when you're halfway through that, you may be less inclined to, to really kind of put the effort in that it would take to, to put a good proposal together. Um, so that's, I'd say a quick, quick and dirty nutshell of my, my kind of comparison of these two, trying to offer a little more detail about that, but it would be. Have the answer and questions y'all might have.
I just want to make sure the audience here and at home know that, that we're not hearing this for the first time, we got a. Council work session on this, which we had lots of back and forth between staff and council.
Yeah, what, what do you mean when you say bidding period?
Sorry, what, what?
When you said bidding period, it concerns me if we bring in developers and we say we have to have a bid in this certain window, we could be limiting the. The sale amount of the lots.
Yes.
If we left it open for sale for a extended period of time, we may get a better price than if we have a bidding period, so I didn't understand that.
Yeah, that was a, that was a, uh, that I, I misspoke in that way, um, so it's really better to think of it as a, it's a. Proposal solicitation period, so we would, we would pick, pick a time to, to open the, the, the solicitation, so in this case. Um, you know, if you want, you, you want to kind of spend a fair bit of time getting the groundwork ready, so I would look to do this in kind of. Late winter or early spring, kind of a February or, or March and open the, the, the request for proposals or request for qualification period. And then we would have that open for, you know, three weeks or a month, something like that, uh, which would then, you know, uh, and then people would be responding during that timeframe. But the idea is, you know, kind of before that, we would be out talking to folks, saying, hey, this is coming, maybe thinking about this, here's the, you know, here's what it's gonna look like. Um, and so that way when the solicitation opens, you know, nobody's surprised, nobody's kind of starting from square one. Um, I think, you know, what you're talking about would be if we just sort of, you know, you list the property and then it just stays on, you know, stays on the market until somebody makes an offer on it that we're looking to accept.
And then, my, my second question, and, and I'm still concerned about that, but my second question is. Uh, the reason why I really wanted a letter from the realtors last time is because I didn't want. Hear say, I wanted to hear directly from the mouths of the realtors on how they felt we should. We should go forward with this, these properties, so can you explain to me again why we did not get those letters?
Well, I got, honestly, I got an original, uh, response from them, it had a few things in there that, well, number one, it didn't have a recommendation. Uh, and so I, I sent it back and said, but we're, we're looking for a recommendation from you all, not just sort of a, an explanation of the different possibilities. Uh, and, you know, I don't really have a, an excuse, we just said we don't have it at this time.
I know from, from my perspective and with my background, um, I do like the idea of being able to have. Developers proposed back to us, want some suggestions, you know, we, we've had success with that in the past with the development down there and I do think. That this would be, um, a site that would generate interest from people and feels like. From my perspective that that would be a good route to at least explore and see if we do get some proposals back from the developers. Um, and if we don't, then we can reevaluate at that time, uh, that would be what I think is a, a good path forward for us.
Consider. I, I would assume, um, that should we make a decision, for instance, to do the request for proposals? And then that isn't working well for us, that we can shift gears and go to the. Just the, the direct sale route?
Yes. Yeah, there's no, there's no obligation to afford, um, if we do a request for proposals or qualifications.
Is it an action item? If there are no further questions of staff?
Yes. Thanks, mayor. Uh. My questions are on timelines, so in a perfect world. Which we all admitted, but in a perfect world, uh, how quick are we hoping? These move.
Uh, in terms of the, the process, yeah, so I mean, I guess what I've been looking at is. I'd be starting to work on the, uh, on the, the request for qualifications immediately, that would go fairly quickly. I think, I mean, looking at the calendar, you know, once you get too far into November, it's. I, I would worry about being able to get, compete for attention, uh, you know, with, with, with our audience, so that's where I'd be looking to. Uh, open the solicitation, you know, probably like late winter, you know, kind of go for like a late January or February timeframe to open it up, uh, and then. You know, I'd want to work with the realtors to know kind of how long a period would make most sense from their perspective to keep it open.
So, probably. Summer at the earliest.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, so we, I mean, just, I'm gonna just talk it out. Uh, so we said beginning of February, we open it, we say a month, so you're talking early March to close it. Um, give ourselves, give ourselves a month to, to review, potentially do interviews, select, uh, and then, so that's April. Uh, and then you're, you're working on the development agreement from there and it'll be a little bit of a crap shoot as far as how, how long or, or short that might take.
Otherwise, though, we could put it on the market immediately.
Correct.
So we either put it on the market immediately and see how it goes, or we wait till potentially summer to dictate how we want it to be presented.
Any further questions? Right, we have a motion.
I move that the U R D conducted development solicitation to dispose of the remaining Independence Landing properties.
Good, second?
Second.
We have a motion by Core, a second by Mark Willis, any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm gonna vote no on this, I am concerned we do not have a letter from the realtors. Uh, that was the whole thing we were waiting on the last time, I'm surprised we weren't forwarded this without recommendation that was supposedly put forth in the last time. Um, I'm concerned about, uh, how much time we're gonna be putting into this to develop, develop this, I. I think if we just left it open to the free market, it might hit a better product more than losing our resources here. And, uh. I'm concerned about the bidding period, um, we don't know what the conditions will be like in May, in June. And to have such a short window of time leaves me, sorry, we're, we're just keep this open, we could potentially get a better product, better bid, just so you help me, vote.
Further questions, comments?
I guess.
You know, I, my response. Uh, to my fellow councillors, we still go that route, because I guess, to the question, uh, what I heard and if other people heard different. Please let me know, but what I heard is we still have to affirm, affirm the decision to go with the solicitation, so there's still that check. And if we're not satisfied with the solicitation, we can still go the other way. So it's an opportunity where we can have the conversation with. Developers specifically for if that makes sense or not, we can sell property from, from.
That was essentially there.
Sure.
We're still using city time resources to get to that, so that was my concern, I understand. I still.
Right, further, no further questions? Do a roll call please, Mayor.
Councillor Core.
Aye.
Councillor Mark Willis.
Aye.
Councillor Weller.
Aye.
Councillor Rowan, no pose. Councillor Source.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. And with that. Do you want to have any more future? Those are adjourned, stand. Alright, thank you, meeting adjourned at six forty five. Keep your attention. We're doing anything.
Yeah, we could, we'll call, call the.
We're doing anything, doing the speech.
You're ready?
I'm ready.
Okay, perfect.
Alright, welcome again, uh, it is six forty six on Tuesday, October thirteenth, and we will call our city councilman to order.
Councillor Core.
Here.
Uh, Councillor Mark Willis.
There.
Councillor Weller.
Here.
Here.
Counselor Robyn, press. Counselor Cross.
Press it.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, and we have many minutes for our last meeting on nine hundred and three. So, uh, sort of sitting possibly. We have a motion to approve.
Look to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Council Cor and a second by Council Mark Devos, uh, and further discussion.
Thank you.
Counselor Source.
Aye.
Counselor Robyn, aye. Counselor Weller.
Aye.
Counselor Mark Devos.
Aye.
Counselor Cor.
Aye.
Thank you, move patents. Next up, we have a, um, visitor with a comments. Um, just a reminder, when you come forward, please state your individual address for the record, you'll have up to three minutes to share your. Comments, and please remember, this is not a dialogue that can also be listened respectfully, but will not begin to discussion at this time. The follow-up or clarification is needed, staff may address at another time, with that, and open up to public comments. At first up, we have Mayor Cor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members, John McFarrelly, six seventy five Monmouth Street, I'm. Here in my role as the co-chair of the Wall of Heels, Billy, uh, Whisnant is not able to be here today, so I'm here to say thank you. Here to say thank you for so many people who helped make this event possible, uh. Specifically, there were some staff people that made a real difference, uh, uh, Jason, Emmanuel, uh. Amy Christensen, uh, Chief. Plus another twenty-five people on the organizing committee that helped make this. Two years ago, there was a vision of bringing the Wall of Heels to our community. To recognize veterans. To reach out families. To reach out to the community and provide education, and we were third, one of, uh. Thirty cities were selected out of a hundred and forty, and we were honored to, uh, be able to host this. And it, uh, did everything we wanted it to be, and we appreciate the City of Independence providing the space. And, and help in lots of different ways, along with all parts of the community to make this happen, let me give you some numbers. That, uh, when the wall arrived in downtown Salem at the State Fairgrounds, it was met. With two hundred motorcyclists and fifteen, uh, Corvettes, and it processed through downtown Salem. To Dallas, to Monmouth, Independence, and over to the Independence Sports Fields. It took. A whole bunch of people to set up a three hundred and seventy-five foot wall, which included forty folks from, uh, Les Schwab. Plus Western Oregon University helped take it down, it was wonderful to have that many people. More than two hundred volunteers and many of the people sitting in this room, both staff, council members and mayor, uh, were there to help be hosts. To the public, to help them find names, to help them with everything from moving around to do all those kinds of things. It made a real difference, and we had some wonderful ceremonies, Mayor, thank you for speaking at that one and also volunteering, we had an Agent Orange ceremony that recognized. Uh, those that were affected, not just. In, at the time in Vietnam, but later on, my immediate predecessor, Tom Ritchie, who was the mayor and then formally went on to be, uh, a county commissioner. He died prematurely because of Agent Orange, I had the pleasure of standing next to Beth at, uh, at the event. You know, when we were hoping to have this here, the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Fund said they hope to get six or seven thousand people to attend. By their count, we had more than eighty-six hundred people attend, people from all over the state. School kids, young people, families, Gold Star families, veterans. So I wanted to just thank you all for the, uh, support you provided and allowing us to be able to bring this to our community, it made a real difference with so many, thank you.
Thank you for bringing it to us.
Alright, next up, we have Catherine Amber Bush.
Good evening, we all love each other, but my name's Catherine Amber Bush, I am one of the owners and the project manager for the property at seven ten Monmouth Street, uh, common help in his house. I came to see your address for the record, so my first owner is a seven to nine C Street, thank you. Um, I spoke with Fred, Commander, introduced to this issue, but he suggested I bring it before the council before, investing more time and money. Uh, we are looking and turning the property into a small event venue. And I know I've spoken with people, the neighbors, there's some concerns about some traffic, and we've got a solution for that, hopefully involving. The trolley and parking elsewhere, so the trolley stop right near the house. Um, so basically, I'm just here to kind of get a feel, you know, you're not supposed to be like, I'm not asking for a vote, but whether I go with her. With doing the application, paying the fees, which are three thousand dollars or more. To, uh, do this, and you know, we've got a lot of research in some other cities to do, working with fire department to see. Uh, what's safe number and that kind of thing, um, we do have an onsite person who will probably live in the property and be an onsite manager. Um, so, but, and what I'm here for is to find out where he has, if that might stand, so why don't change it from a residential heights of density to a commercial zoning, to be able to run a business.
So unfortunately, we're not able to provide a comment tonight, but we can follow up with staff and look to get this on an agenda item. In the future, so then we'll, we'll be able to go up with you at that time.
Right, and that's what I, I said, just hoping to bring that here to see if it's something that you guys had any. Uh. Thought before I, okay, you suggested before I spent any more time on here. Oh, we first, thank you.
And next up, we have Amshuk.
Hi, I'm Shek. Um, I'm publisher of Tramart News, I think most of you know me by now, and I reside at two nine eight, uh, Twenty Fourth Street in Salem. Uh, I just wanted to let you know that Tramart News reporting is focused on how residents are affected by city actions. A focus on reporting of issues that inform the public, particularly how tax dollars are spent. So tonight, you will give your city manager a pay raise, probably. And, um, because your communications coordinator has not answered me for the past eighteen months. Um, and the amount is not in the agenda packet that I could see, I calculated it from last year's. And, um, the estimated sum will be a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, a base salary plus cash allowance. Uh, for dues and other compensations, not including insurance and, um. Pension benefits, if that's not right, please correct me, like I said, I could not find, uh, the amount in the packet. And in, tonight, in an unusual performance review, and as far as I know, unlike professional practices for assessing a city. Executive, there will be no for, formal performance review of twenty twenty-five, nor official goal setting. And though this isn't standard practice for administrative evaluations, I do plan to do a story, and each of you. Tonight should have received from me the template that I use for doing such an article, and, um. This, the example that I sent you was the, the soup, the school superintendent evaluation, which, um. Is just a sample of time monitored reporting, it's what I've always been taught to do, and I fall, I'm going to follow the same format. With you, number one, in hers was salary and comparisons with salary. Number two, the outcome of a board evaluation, the process that was used, the directives for the coming year. And a short and brief review of her previous year. Uh, the recommendations from professional organizations on how they, this should be done, and by the way, in her, in the article on her, I had some. Basically, a little bit of a criticism because I had used, uh, information that I gleaned from the. O S B A and other professional organizations on how the review should be done, so that's in the bottom part of her email that shows you how I did this. So in conclusion, um, I'm doing this because. The mayor and the city manager in email exchanges obtained through a public records request.
Thank you, Ms. Shek.
I'm here to agree.
We have time, Ms. Shek.
That, um, it will only, uh.
About time, there. That's time, thank you. Okay. Just, sorry. Alright, we're gonna move on to reports and presentations, so first up is my report. Um, I just want to say that I attended the one hundredth annual League of Oregon Cities, uh, conference in. Portland, which is the largest gathering of municipal leaders each year in Oregon, Council Source also attended, as well as staff and counselors from surrounding communities. Uh, these conferences are just a great opportunity, uh, for city officials to learn best practices, network with other peers, industry leaders. Share what's working in our community, as well as bring back new ideas to help our community move forward, so I found that time to be very. Worthwhile, very beneficial, and was able to bring back some things with me that I'll be able to hopefully integrate into, um. Projects that we have moving forward, uh, when the times are rough. Um, we also continue to meet regularly with our partners, Shorepool County, to keep a pulse on things. Um, happening not only at a local level, but also federal, state level, um, I find these to be a great benefit to our staff, our community. And look forward to be teaming those, I think it's time well spent, um, and helps break deficiencies to urgent, and helps us kind of stay abreast of what is. Um, potentially going to be impacting this in the future. And finally, I hope everyone had a chance to attend the Ghost Walk recently, it's a time honored tradition, it was a lot of fun to. See all the activity downtown and to, uh, hear about some of our spooker residents, so. With that, um, we are going to hand over to the council liaison reports, and I actually had a question from a community member recently about. Why we have liaison, so I just wanted to take a minute, um, to touch on that, um. So, the council liaisons play an important role in keeping the communication flowing between, uh, the city council and our various boards. Um, and committees, uh, our liaisons attend meetings, they listen, they bring back updates to share with their fellow council members. And it's a great way for us to stay informed about the work happening throughout our community. It's important to remember that liaison reports are meant to be informational in nature, um, it's not a place for our individual opinions, our personal commentary or criticism. Um, they are not working directly with these groups or speaking on behalf of city council when they are attending these meetings. Um, the goal is to share their observations and highlights, um, ensuring that maintaining transparency and mutual respect between. The councils and also our community volunteers. By keeping these reports factual and neutral, we support the integrity of the process and show respect for the many people who give their time and expertise. Serving Independence, and we have some amazing volunteers in our community. So with that, let's begin our liaison reports again, uh, so Source, you have our first up with the mine up board.
So, thank you, Mayor, I have a two prompt report, because on August twentieth, uh, the mine up board met. Uh, we talked, uh, we met for about an hour and talked about how mine up is doing very well, it's in the black. Um, again, love, and I think I saw it in our schedule that we're going to get mine up here to do a presentation. Around some of the work they've been doing and their ability to pay back with the city as loan, that we're going to showcase support for, you know. Um, and not only are they in the black, but they're expanding out, um, into all of Dallas and, uh, all city and parts of Shorepool County. And, um, are getting some great, uh, concentration of. Uh, meeting members signing up for their services, which is exciting. Um, and at our upcoming meeting, uh, there were some conversations about. Uh, process of review for our general manager, Jake's been there for a while, probably should get a review, so we're having that conversation, that was the best process to, uh. To give up some feedback, uh, and then the next day on August twenty-first was the mine up, so, uh, we had that at, uh. Behind the state park in Monmouth, right by the, uh, mine up building. And it was just a wonderful event full of community, and I saw for the first time a bubble. Wow, which is, we're big fans of, I had never experienced that before, I thought that was really cool. Um, and there's some great vendors, uh, music, food, it's just a great time, so. Just want to give a shout out to mine up for putting that on for our community and thanks for the beauty we have attended.
Counselor Source, you asked a question, is that expansion still under the Willamette fiber, Willamette Valley fiber name?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it is, and there's been conversations with. Um, the ownership team about the future of that partnership, and I think moving forward, there's. They're still, uh, working on that next phase of what that partnership looks like, but it is still under that, that same, yeah.
Thank you, next up, we have the parks board, we want to. So the Parks Board hasn't met since April, and I've given a report on that, I did submit on September twenty-sixth to, uh. City reporter and with the city manager, some pictures of Sunset Park. Um, I've been concerned, and I had some people from the public come to me and say, you need to go look at Sunset Park, that, you know, it's not. That, make sure that you're very clear that it has nothing to do with public works, public works is doing an amazing job, I'm not saying that. Uh, it's just, it's just too much landscaping for a small. Staff to be able to handle what's happening on Sunset Park, so I met with some people down there and, and I, you have the pictures, will I send? Cool, so I sent the pictures because almost half the trees in Sunset Park are now dead, and the irrigation in the park has been torn up. And that was my concern when we developed a park for that large, with so much landscape, and it, it's really, really hard to maintain in an area of that size. So I just, I'm, I'm really concerned in the future, or maybe the. The Parks Board, and we develop these things in the future, that we do a very good job in trying to lay out a park so that we can actually maintain them, so that they survive. Doesn't look good to have half the trees dead, it's not.
I believe those issues have been raised, um, city manager must with.
Correct, as you know, I'm one of the instructors on emergency plant relief, and we'll, um, do further into it.
Thank you. But next up, the independence days, uh, commission with Council Board.
It might be pretty short, sweet, now on twenty-five September, and we did discuss the future of the independence days, and we're going to be discussing that here shortly, so we'll just. Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's, that's pretty much it, um.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for those reports, and next up is City Manager Must.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, uh, I'll be short on this tonight because we have a pretty long agenda. Um, I'm pleased to introduce our new finance director, Amanda Barrett, she's senior to our prior finance director, I won't say old, say prior.
Appreciate that.
Cash, of course. Um, with over thirteen years of dedicated service in government finance, Amanda brings a strong skill set. And in-depth understanding of financial operations that support essential services and long-term planning, as well as commitment to transparency and accountability. And we know that's a focus for this town. We're excited to welcome her to our team and look forward to the positive impact she'll make back. So I hope you'll welcome her, if with your approval, Council, I'm going to kick her free, uh, so she doesn't have to stay, because I have a lot of work for her to do in the coming weeks and months.
Make Mr. Smith.
Well, let's make Rob stay.
We'll make Rob stay. But he can walk her out, right?
Yeah, sure, thank you.
I'll be right.
Welcome, uh, welcome, thank you.
Alright, and then we will pass it on to Mr. Byington, please.
Yeah, appreciate, uh, the opportunity to give you an update on where we're at, uh, the, the grants. Um, so we gave you the, gave you the, the full list of, uh. You know, basically everything we've applied for and, and received, um, in tallying up everything, um, it's actually pretty impressive, we've gotten almost, almost seventeen million dollars in grants still. Uh, and counting the, uh, the, the loans as well, that's about twenty-four million dollars, uh, pretty significant number. The, it's, you know, mix large and small, as you can see, we've worked at pretty much all the departments. Um, the, just to kind of emphasize what this means for the city. You know, it's leveraging our resources, it's, um, being able to do more with the city funds that we have, but, you know, you'll be in, uh. In the next couple, uh, next month or two, we're actually going to be bringing a request to reduce S T Cs. Uh, to council, and that's going to be, uh, in large part because of some of these grants that they've gotten, that were able to pay for projects that were, uh, anticipated to be, uh. Funded by system development targets, so, um, that's a real, a real impact from these grants that we've been able, that we're going to be able to experience. Um, I think, uh, in, uh. Just one quick note to make about, we're actually mixing up, um, so one of the, uh. Um, so one of the uh, the grants that was listed as not to receive is actually the stiff, stiff formula funds uh for the trolley, those actually were received. Uh, so uh, those and the fifty, thirty, ten dollars, they actually went over to Montmouth, which is the fiscal agent for the trolley, but we were able to secure a pretty solid amount of funding for the trolley. Um, and really the other thing I'll note is um there's a seven point one million dollar loan that we were able to just secure uh from the special public works fund. Um, that loan is going to replace a line of credit that we took out uh to do the design and engineering work for the service on a treatment plant. Um, I jumped the wrong, the interest rate on the, the line of credit that we currently have is uh six point seven five percent. Uh, and this new SPWF loan is gonna replace it is a two point nine percent interest. So, you know, even though it's not a grant, it is still gonna be able to save us a significant amount of money. Uh, and then the last thing I'll, I'll just wanna always kind of highlight is, you know, it's, it's great to get the grants, but then of course there's administrative work as well, uh and that's where Marshall has been really, really helpful. Um, during, you know, and you'll note on a number of like, I noted quarterly reports, you know, final reports, you know, monthly meetings, things like that, just to kind of um identify, you know, some of these, particularly the federal money, they, they do tend to take the fair bit of work chasing down details and and kind of, you know, sustaining the process, uh and so it's really helpful to have, you know, uh being able to run down those details, because individually they don't take a lot of time, but collectively um they can really turn it one fair bit. But I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I just wanna make a comment, um, Mr. Irvine, this is an exceptional list of, of submissions and awards, and I think we can all agree that bringing Marshall on as a contract grant writer has been a resounding success, and there's a depth and breadth here that I've not seen before, so congratulations.
Thanks, Mayor. If I can add to council reporter, uh, I really appreciate this and hope this can be just a consistent tiny item in our agenda so that the public is just aware of the work we're doing, and I just wanna give a shout out to Marshall for all his hard work and dedication. Make sure that not only is he covering his costs, but he's doing that in far more, and I just appreciate all you all doing to uh be really mindful about how much tax fair dollars are.
Yes, I echo that. Thank you so much for all the hard work on that. It is a huge benefit to our community to be able to leverage these grants and more interest from loans in some cases for the savings that it has for our community is pretty remarkable, so thank you.
Alright, we have non-finished business, so new business, um, Mr. Irvine, there's the other answer, the Independence Days ad hoc board recommendation.
Yes, uh, and I'm gonna just give a quick overview, then you can turn it over to uh the Wisconsin court, we're gonna, that was gonna talk about this uh if, if necessary.
I'm prepared, go ahead.
Sorry. So, um, yes, you were a call, you know, creation of the Independence Days ad hoc committee uh was really intended to figure out what we could do with the Independence Days event to uh, to really reduce its impact on, on city staff, city services. Uh, the committee met a total of five times, involved uh a number of city staff that are involved in the, in the event um to really be able to, to better understand the event, how it, how it's put on uh the different aspects uh that are important to truly making it a successful event. Um, and then really to kind of talk about alternatives in terms of, you know, how this event could evolve or could change uh in a way to, to make it less of a of a burden on, on, on the city, city resources. So uh, all that to say, you know, after really looking at all kinds of, of, of possibilities, uh really the result that presented itself was creation of a new five one C three, not a community nonprofit uh that could, that would take on the event. Uh, the idea, which I think is actually pretty elegant, is that community nonprofit uh can take on the event, but uh, you know, if there is surplus of funds after the event is done, then that same nonprofit can turn that loan back to Independence Parks and to support the, you know, the development or payments of, of Independence Park, so you're kind of creating this community benefit uh through this community event. Uh, the uh, so when I was, the recommendation of the meeting along with um kind of use, use of a memorandum of understanding to to really kind of memorialize the transfer of the event and the items associated with the event uh for this nonprofit. You know, we've got a couple of folks uh who are working on the establishment of the nonprofit, the audience here, if you have any questions for them uh or me, uh, I, I think that's uh will be extended by our report at this point.
I would just like to add, um, it's good to see trusted members of the community step up, many of whom have been involved in Independence Days for years. Um, and thank you to the staff for guiding this whole process.
Are there questions, comments?
Uh, Mayor, this is supposed to be from the community that's on.
Uh, so we have Susan Brown and um and Andrea with these with.
Thank you.
And one thing I forgot to mention, I'm sorry, uh, the, there are several members of the current Independence Day committee who did agree that they would continue their work with this new nonprofit, so this wouldn't be just sort of dropping it in, in new people's laps with no experience, there would be a transition period.
I just wanna say, I was sitting on the ad hoc committee as well, and this really was a group effort from the entire uh community. As we looked at, you know, one particular organization taking it over versus another, and what it really came down to was everyone has to get together, they want this to happen next year. Everyone has to get together, come together to do that. I know that Susan was part of saying, hey, we can do this, we can do a five one three, and we can make that happen. So I really appreciate the community coming together to do this alive.
Yes, thank you to our super volunteers. I know you wear many hats and it's appreciated.
I move that the council authorized the city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding transferring the Independence Days event to a nonprofit, he's just been too soon.
Think you're rather wrong one, council.
It, it was, council, you're jumping ahead. Thank you for looking forward.
Alright, I think move the page seventeen. We had just had two actions.
It's on the screen. Correct, now I will move, I move. I move that the council accept the new Independence Days ad hoc commissions, recommendations, transfer of Independence Days to the community nonprofit. And the city use it regarding the understanding to clarify the details of the transfer.
Second.
We have a motion by councilor Roman and a second by councilor Corr, any of those are questions? Okay.
I just wanna say to, to the volunteers, thank you, and maybe this is a great opportunity to make sure that uh, in addition to taking over some of the stuff going on in Independence, we can have a parent's schedule on it through Independence of events for the weekend, and not have any events on full size of, of the S, because that would be one thing. So, challenge to you all, since you're a part of the independence group, uh, so do that, and thank you for your, all, all you all have done and wish you luck.
Thank you. With that, no further questions, comments, hold on.
Counselor Source.
Aye.
Counselor Roman, Counselor Walder.
Aye.
Counselor Mark Wallace.
Aye.
Counselor Cor.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. Now moving on to seven point two, also Mr. Irvine, with the Independence Day.
Um, yeah, and so uh recognizing that even though uh summer is, feels like a long time away, if you're talking about organizing something like Independence Days, uh there is no sooner time to get started than now. Um, as it became clear where, where things were heading with the ad hoc committee, uh, we started having conversations with folks about the memorandum of understanding, how to, how to memorialize this transfer. Uh, and so that is the, the draft that you have here, that you're packing today. Do you wanna emphasize, it's not quite a final draft, uh, there's still just, you know, we're there's a couple, you know, small things that need to be worked out, uh, that may need to be worked out.
There you go.
I'm sorry.
Or may not.
Or may not need to be worked out. Uh, but I just wanna make clear that uh, this agreement, you know, they we, we see the final thing, there may be a couple of minor changes that there might not be. Uh, but bottom line is this, this MOU, the purpose is to really just sort of identify the separation between the city and the organization, separation of responsibilities, but also to memorialize the, the intent to, to still collaborate on this event. Um, the city is not just saying, hey, we're completely done walking away, we do still want to be a supportive entity uh for this event, just in a different way than we have been in the past.
Thank you. Counselor Cor.
I know the MOU states that it is non-binding. Um, my concern is, should some of these considerations be binding? And I'll defer as a lawyer in the room, fully digesting the city of any legal responsibilities. Um, following all per the city code, responsibility for liabilities and costs arising from its own actions. And city employees may not perform services unless on leave. I, I trust that we spoke to get a step on smartly and professionally, but I just, I question on the word binding.
So we had it fully reviewed, embedded by our contact attorney, and she is uh the capital of the MOU as it stands. So she's very, very good at protecting us, and thank you. Thank you for the question, Lee.
Yes, and now I'm gonna put you on the spot, um, city manager West, but can you kind of give a quick little explanation of the difference that we're talking to in whatever task meetings about difference between it being a friend of a park versus the um, the event itself, you were about that?
It's, uh, so this, um I'm trying to remember, counselor Walder, what we were talking about, or remember generally the conversation?
There were concerns that it was an extension of the city.
Okay, right. Um, so this is, the interesting thing, and one of the things that could change about this is uh, it can be the friends of any, it can be the friends of the planet, it should be friends of the planet, right? It's a friends separate group as opposed to a city arm, and so let's say our parks or goes away, right? They can attach to anything. So um, that is a separation between the city arm, like a board versus a friend, which is um just a uh, a separate entity assisting the city in a certain event and providing fundraising when possible. Did I summarize that well enough, counselor Walder?
Yep.
Counselor Cor.
Um, one more thing, uh, Mr. Irvine, under the compliance and that go along on discrimination, can you please add ethnicity to the list? That speaks to our, to shared traditions, language, and ancestor.
Thank you.
I'm never look return to that, but yes.
Any other question, the comments?
I move that the council authorize the city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding transferring the Independence Day event to a new community nonprofit or usage.
Sure.
We have a, a motion by counselor Martin Willis and a second by counselor Walder. For the question, discussion? We'll call.
Counselor Cor. Aye. Counselor Mark Willis.
Aye.
Counselor Walder.
Aye.
Counselor Roman. Aye. Counselor Source.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes, and thank you again to community opportunity distribution moving forward. Alright, next up, we have a couple of, for the floor, board, community commissioner appointments, and this is the end of your West.
Thank you, thank you, mayor and council. Sean and I are just commenting on, uh, how glad we are at the MOU, uh, moving forward, it's a great group of people. Um, as you know, uh, in collaboration with Mayor Schwartzler, we updated the community appointment application and appointment process. We are now into the third quarter of events, uh, you are pros in this, so um the only thing I really want to note is that the one interesting thing is first of mine at IGA. And we were going to move forward with, and I want to thank everyone who applied, because we had to delay them, and then delay them again. Um, because the mine at IGA clearly states that the director, the general public uh director will be appointed using the board and commissions and process, and so we had to delay that a little bit to come before you during the normal process, because that's what the IGA said. Otherwise, what you see here is what you've done for the past.
Thank you. Um, if I can make a suggestion to, to of the, uh, to the boards. Uh, the library as well as, sorry, did we know the right?
Museum.
Museum, right, or outpost, um, if there's, maybe we open those up and take care of those first.
I move to accept the applicants to the library, the museum boards, second.
So we have a, first by counselor Cor, second by counselor Martin Willis, do we have any questions or discussion?
I just wanna thank those applicants, and particularly, particularly one who does not have a great deal of past community involvement experience. I think the library works a great place to start. So if you haven't done it yet, or done something yet, don't let that lack of experience hold you back. Jump in and, and do a board, that will be heard.
Yes, we appreciate having some new names on the list, uh, and thank you Patrick also for your leadership at the library, um. It's not there for leadership of these leagues well, but with that, um, do we have any further discussion? First and the second, further discussion, we will call.
Counselor Source.
Aye.
Counselor Roman. Aye. Counselor Walder.
Aye.
Counselor Mark Wallace.
Aye.
Counselor Cor.
Aye.
Thank you, and for mineet, again, um, I appreciate having multiple top off rank candidates, so we're willing to make a decision when we have one spot to fill. Um, and at this point, I will open up the discussion among the councilors.
I am torn between the two, um, Michael Hicks and Bradley Parkin, and Michael, because of the continuity that he would bring to it, and I think that's important because we're trying to stay on top of the debt situation, and wanna make sure that we continue to have good relationships with the mineup organization, and Bradley, because of his local government interaction.
I think it would be great to get someone new, uh, fresh, fresh onto the scene, uh, someone uh, maybe who hasn't done the board before, so I've had a talk between um David Hubert. I say it terribly wrong, I apologize, and Mike Rhodes, I think they both bring forth uh some pretty positive uh backgrounds that maybe in my perspective, could be really good on the board. I apologize for.
Further question, comments?
For a comment, I think that um Michael has done a great job for us. Mineup is kind of a complex beast with um a pretty interesting history, and I really value his knowledge and into.
I have a question. Is there a limit on the amount of terms that the ad hoc term probably under considered open?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
This is a question, I think that we will need a motion.
I move that we recommend, I move that we recommend uh Mike Rhodes to the mineup.
We have a second from Mike Rhodes. There are none motion favors, there are none of motion.
Um, I move that we reappoint Michael Hicks to the mineup.
Second, the motion by Martin Willis and a second by um Cor, further discussion?
I I have a request, and maybe if we're gonna go this way this time, that's fine, but future, it would be nice to have the opportunity to get interview a couple of finalists. The problem with this process is that I read was on this paper, but that only tells so much the story of the children, especially people I don't know. I love. I'm here, I can answer any questions you want.
Thank you for me.
Thank you for me, but what I would love is the opportunity to have dialogue, um, and so.
I think maybe that should be the case anytime we get more than one applicant for a position.
And I, I understand that that's how it works, staff, so I'm, I'm be mindful of that, but um.
Can we call this?
So, that, that's just a comment, uh, if we might move forward with that, uh, motion.
Can we delay this motion and have people come in, or just give it to David for me?
It's already been delayed twice, you said, right?
Yeah, it's already, I'm like. I've already been delaying twice, Claire, is he? The mayor uh provides the opportunity for the council to give their input, but it is the mayor's decision. And if the council votes for anyone and the mayor disagrees, then the mayor, the point she moves is the correct person. She has just chosen this process because it's collaborative, and it fits her leadership.
So with that, we do have a motion on the table, and we're hoping for the discussions, I would call for, we'll call.
Counselor Cor.
Aye.
Counselor Martin Willis.
Aye.
Counselor Walder.
John.
Counselor Roman, propose. Counselor Source.
Aye.
Motion passes. Motion passes. Thank you. And I do wanna say thank you very much for being here and, um, I'd love to follow up with you and see if there isn't a way for you to be involved in a, uh, city boards. I do appreciate, um, your willingness to volunteer.
Mine net is, is such a resource for this town that it's, it's worth it however it comes out.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate that. And I do appreciate you being here. So, you know, it's like, city council meetings aren't always, you know, the top priority for you.
Uh, before we.
I've seen you all on, on the Zoom meeting, so it's, it's, it's fun to see you personally.
Yeah. In three.
Well, thank you for being there. It's nice to hear that you're a boss.
Yeah, you're welcome. Yes, thank you.
And Mayor, before we leave this item, um, would you please, uh, announce who you've chosen for these positions?
Yes. Yeah, okay. Um, so for, you get to notes in front of me, um. So to fill the mine net position, uh, Michael Hicks will be continuing with the service, um, charting up, uh. And then for, uh, the museum board, it is Victor Choa, I'm not sure, uh, Choa. And then, uh, for the library board, Tristan Thomas. So thank you, Arlan, for stepping forward. Um, we do appreciate, um, I deeply appreciate this process of being able to get input from the community and um, look forward, looking forward to having more, more voluntary, get involved in our city boards.
And Mayor, I'm gonna be a lawyer one more time, and I apologize. Um, Mr. Thomas, would you like it in position three with the expiration date of June thirty twenty twenty nine? Or position seven with the expiration date of June thirty twenty twenty seven?
Twenty nine.
That would be position three for Tristan Thomas.
Thank you.
Thank you. You've made honors ladies.
Yes.
Meaning we still have one position open.
Okay.
Correct.
Yes.
So, uh. For anybody interested.
But permission to the city council meeting, I do. All right, um. Our next item, um, I do have, um, some remarks that I would like to read. We will be doing our twenty one vice city manager review. Um, Chris, and I know you are going to be a huge help, uh, with this, um, so I, again, I have some statements that I want to read, um. For the community's, um, benefit as well, and hopefully also for the city, uh, city staff and also the counselors. Um, so before we begin tonight's city manager performance review, I'm gonna take a few moments to provide some context because what we are doing here tonight is highly unusual. Typically, performance reviews for the city manager are conducted in an executive session so that personal matters can be discussed candidly and respectfully as we would with any, um, personal matter. However, after what has taken place over the past year, in particular in recent months, as you may have noticed with the inclusion of an incident report from the Polk County Sheriff's Office, our city manager has chosen to have her review in open session. And while that is not the norm, I completely understand and support her decision. She has nothing to hide and I deeply respect her courage in choosing transparency even when it comes at a high personal cost. I'll be honest, I find it very disappointing that we are in this position of having to have this in an open council session. Our city manager and our staff as a whole have endured an incredible amount of stress due to the actions and words of a very small number of individuals, including some who seem intent on undermining trust in city leadership rather than helping this building. This is not who we are as a community and it is not reflective of the majority of the council or our residents. So I wanna cover briefly the role of the city manager. So I want to remind everyone what a city manager's role is in Oregon's city manager, uh, sorry, council manager form of government. The city manager is not a politician. She is a professional administrator appointed by the city council to carry out the policies we adopt. She is responsible for the day-to-day operations of the city, managing staff, overseeing budgets, implementing projects, and ensuring that city services are delivered effectively and equitably. The city council, on the other hand, focuses on setting policy direction and representing the community's vision and values. It is a partnership built on trust and respect. And I am proud to say that under our city manager's leadership, that partnership has been strong, productive, and valuable. Now here's silver lining to it, if there is going to be. And there it is. Because this review is happening in public, the community gets to hear what we as a city have accomplished over the past year. Despite the noise, despite the distractions, our city manager and staff have stayed focused. Under our city manager's leadership, we've moved important projects forward, improved transparency and communication, strengthened interdepartmental teamwork, and delivered real results for the people of Independence. This is a moment to recognize excellence, not just in one person, um, but in the entire team she leads. And for that, I'm grateful the community gets to share inherent accomplishments tonight as we perform the review. Next, we are going to hear from Amanda Christensen, who is going to present the staff, um, the staff review results. So we have done a full performance review of our city manager. So we will hear from Amanda Christensen, um, and after we hear from her, each counselor, when called upon, will have the opportunity to come. And then we will hear directly, um, from city manager list. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Amanda Christensen, who is prepared with the, the house secretary.
We're gonna hold it forward to you.
There's no connection. It's okay. There, that's fine. I can. So, uh, listen, I'll. I go on. You sure? Yeah. I'll make sure you guys hear me. You have to. No problem. Right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to present the results of twenty twenty five city manager employee survey. A process conducted this year with full transparency, transparency and open discussion in mind. This year's review was completely anonymous by department heads using a five-point scale in open and fat. Every single response rated the city manager in the top two categories, agree or strongly agree. Across all six performance areas, leadership, communication, self, staff development, workplace culture, vision, and overall effectiveness. That's a one hundred percent response rating. Which is exceptionally rare in a professional evaluation of this type. The rate communications reinforce that data. Staff consistently describe the city manager's leadership as empowering. Someone who trusts her team, encourages professional growth, and avoids micromanagement. That, they noted her clear reflection, communicate, clear respectful communication, steady professionalism under, excuse me, steady professionalism under public pressure. And genuine commitment to both the organization and to the community. Um, a result, uh, sorry. Our referring fee was, was integrity. Employees said they value their fairness and consistency even when external pressures are high. One director summed it up with, strong leadership isn't about control. It's about guidance, trust, and integrity. Our city manager emotes all of that. For which. Now, a quick note about tonight's setting. Presenting the review in open session is not something we anticipate continuing as a standard of practice. Executive evaluations are typically held in more confidential formats to preserve staff calendar and organizational privacy. However, this year's open session was specifically requested by the city manager herself. She wants the entire story shared publicly, ensuring that the council and the community heard directly from the staff about organizations' health, culture, and leadership. That choice reflects competence in the process, respect for staff voices, and a deep commitment to fair and balanced understanding. Financially, the city manager's compensation follows the, the city's seventh step structure, which allows for a five percent performance-based increase with others, with other, uh, excuse me, worth noting, that's only about fifteen percent out of the general fund. Which is approximately one thousand three hundred forty-three dollars annual. The remainder would, would be distributed across inter-press funds. In summary, a survey results demonstrates organization, that then organization that is healthy, respectful, and well-led. The consistency of feedback, both in, both qualitative and quantitative, reflects the culture of trust, professionalism, and collaboration that benefits the whole community and the city. It's a staff recommendation that the council accept the twenty twenty five city manager employee survey results as presented and authorize a five percent based salary increase effective October twenty second, twenty twenty five.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions of staff?
Yes.
I don't know if I heard this right. I mean, I just, so correct me if I'm wrong. Did you say fifteen percent of the general fund and it's thirteen hundred dollars?
Yes, so.
How much could it be?
It's on the increase. It's on that five percent increase. So the five percent increase will be eight thousand nine hundred and. I got the numbers here. So, what's going on? And she would get a five percent increase, which would be a total of. Fair enough here. Wrong.
That's only what comes out of the general fund. The rest is out of all the other.
Correct. So what we're looking at is out of the general, general fund, it would be one thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars. Of the rest of the funds that would cover that.
Oh, I got you. I got you.
Okay, okay.
But if we were to say.
To our water.
Yeah.
Sorry. I know, I appreciate that. Yes.
My question is, um, and I may have misunderstood you here too. Were the only options for the evaluation is only strongly agreed or agreeing? Or did you say?
No, there was five options. There was the, the strongly agreed, agreed, neutral, uh, disagreed, or strongly disagreed.
I'll, no, I'll wait until you're ready for counseling.
No further questions. I'm going to allow counselors to weigh in. Um, I do want to point out that, um, Counselor Martin was not able to be here, um, tonight, but she did send in a letter and I do want to, um, read this letter for the records. I understand that your annual valuation will be conducted in open session during the next independent city council meeting. I cannot give the meaning to our prior Oregon Main Street application. Please accept this letter as my evaluation of your role as independent city manager. I further request that this letter be made available to other counselors. It becomes a part of the public record relative to your evaluation during the meeting. My experience serving on the independent city council spans through you and three former city managers of the four, and I'm pleased to declare factually that you are the most professional, most law-aware and law-abiding, and the most clearly dedicated to each member of the staff of the city of Independence. You are always responsive to me as a member of city council, being available to me whenever I feel the need. You share your time to thoroughly discuss issues. Your decisions and advice, counsel, and helpful thoughts are always clear and practical. I believe that as a city manager, you have endured more publicly-based challenges than your predecessors. Despite the often difficult or obstructive nature of these challenges, you continue to be professional, law-aware, and law-abiding, and dedicated to your staff. When I have occasions to interact with your staff members, I freely share a clear respect for you and your strong supporters. That respect and support speak loudly to me about the quality of relationship and workplace standards with which you honor and guide the staff who serve you. You have many admirable qualities, and one that I particularly admire is your ability to listen. I appreciate knowing that when we communicate, I'm fully heard. That is rare, especially in public communication. Thank you for being such a consistent practitioner of excellent communication skills. I am grateful the city council elected to offer me the position of city manager of Independence, and even more grateful that you accepted. You have had and will continue to have my full support since you're the mayor in law. With that, um, Counselor Cor, we just start at this end and allow counselors and officers to arrive with the room.
Thank you, Mayor. In my experience working with multiple city managers, I find city manager Hannah West to be sexually focused, ethical, and dedicated. This sentiment is widely shared. I have personally heard numerous city council members and administrators from other municipalities praise her as one of the very best in the field. On a practical level, city manager West is consistently responsive to my needs as an elected official. She regularly schedules meetings, thoroughly addresses all my inquiries, and has proven to be an invaluable resource for navigating complex policy decisions. Furthermore, her impact on the city organization is clear. Through my personal connections with city staff, I know that staff morale is currently the highest I have seen, especially when compared to my time as a staff member or her previous manager. I am confident that her work on various committees, boards, and organizations reflects the highest caliber of professionalism and clearly speaks to our community's needs. I am proudly part of her such a skilled professional and look forward to her continued stewardship of our city.
So I did not prepare, um, anything for this evening, so this just comes from the heart. I have had the opportunity to work under the city, city manager West is my third city manager. Uh, as a member of this council. And I have to say, I have found her to be professional, efficient, as well as warm. And is one of those people that when this job gets tough, you can talk to. And she does, in fact, was. I have been so disappointed at what she has had to endure since graciously coming on board as our city manager. She has advised our council well with wisdom, guidance, direction, input. Um, we could not have asked for a better city manager. To get a city manager. And thank you for standing up.
That's a bold point.
All right, I'd like to, but I have to say for the record that no matter what the increases that I hear, not getting paid enough to live here. I know that, um, I don't like talking about my military experience, but I was in the military five years. I've had a lot of different bosses over, over my lifetime, seen a lot of different leadership styles. And I really appreciate the leadership style that you brought, uh, to this position. And the first day that I was in your office, when I was ready for city council, sat me down. I didn't know anything about what I was doing and what I was getting into. You, you kind of led me through the whole process, referred you open. Um, and ever since that day, anytime I had a question, talk to you. And I really, uh, appreciate the relationship that you've, uh, established with the mayor and the sense of transparency that you brought to this whole entire process, maybe the, the city, the city, the city hall, town meetings, and all of the things that you guys have done together, um, it's just made me super impressed and, uh, I'm happy to help you.
I'm always trying to look at how the city manager does the perspective of someone living in Independence. Uh, I don't wanna be combative in this role I have, but the city of Independence pays really high property taxes. We pay really high for our water, we pay really high for amenities that we don't have. And I don't even put this on the shoulders of the city manager, but even when I try to get clarification on why we changed things, I don't seem to get clear answers. I just, I feel like I just need to go with flow of where the city is going and I'm not supposed to question. And when I do question it, I get resistance. The question I got just recently is why do we go to a three-day weekend for salaried employees? Why do we do that? Why, how does it benefit the people of the independence to have city hall closed on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday? And the biggest response we got from that was, we're going to extend the life of the elevators in this building. It's those types of responses that make me question what's happening in our city. It's not because I have a personal disagreement with the city manager, but I would like to see our city thrive and literally expand. I asked, why did Seventh Street flood? Well, we can't get an answer right now. I'm asking, why are we spending so much money on parks? Well, we can't get an answer. So instead of working with me and trying to find solutions, it seems to be for me, everything is a stop, can't do, process. I'm very disappointed that the library is not open for. I'm very disappointed we don't have safe place for kids to swim in our community. I'm very disappointed that we haven't done these types of things. So for me, I feel like we could do much better. We could look at what we're doing in our community, restructure things so that we have more resources, more safety, more police, like police force.
Counselor Rooker, I do wanna bring us back to the topic at hand, which is.
This is the topic. See, this is the example. As soon as I bring up something that's contradictory, I'm silenced.
We're focusing on it for four more minutes.
I didn't mean to tell you what's why I'm talking the way I'm talking, because we have to get things done better. We, if, if you're gonna manage our city, you need.
Can you provide the examples of how this ties to the city manager's work performance?
Because her job is to put forth a budget and proposals and bring forth ideas that we can fully staff our police department, make sure that we're open for our community, make sure our beautiful library is open, make sure that we tried to save our museum. Make sure that we're open for our community. Make sure our beautiful library is open. Make sure that we tried to save our museum other than by, you know, doing what we're doing. I that's why I'm concerned with our city ahead. I will stop. I have no need for this. Counselors.
Thanks, Mayor. So I want to just thank, uh, our city manager for giving us the opportunity to provide the bat and the mayor in this, uh, in this manner. I know it's super unusual, but I think it's, um, healthy for, uh, the moment that we're in. So thank you. Um, first thing I want to say is the city manager isn't a magician. She can't make money up here. So she has to live within the realities that we're in. And unfortunately, that's why some of the decisions have had to be taken. So just want to make sure that our members of the public hear this. Um, when I think about a review of a city administrator, I think the most important voices are the voices of the staff. They could the staff that work with them every day. And what I heard from our HR director were words like empower, trust, respect. Uh, encourages personal growth, has integrity. And those are the the values that I see in our city manager. Uh, I appreciate that although she does not live in our community, hopefully that changes one day. Uh, she's there at everything. She makes it a point to be present, to meet her, to get to know our residents, to get to know what keeps them up, to get to know the challenges they face. And I appreciate that city administrator who, well, they argue that's not their job, but it kind of does. Uh, every time I've had a question, uh, I've got an answer. I might not like the answer I get, but I've got. Uh, every time I have an idea, sometimes I can tell the city manager is not thrilled with the idea. But sometimes, uh, every time it's been a let's talk about that. Let's sit down and have a conversation. I appreciate it. Um, I might be branding to the council, but I'm not due to how cities function. And I think it's a rarity to have a city administrator who's willing to take risks. Um, and willing to put her neck out to make sure that the community has opportunities to grow and to develop in ways that are unique and innovative. And I appreciate, um, how she's encouraged our staff to develop and take trainings and grow as public servants. Because as long as we keep our staff here and we get that, uh, we get that experience, we get that development, we get that know-how, I think that's super powerful. So, you know, city manager West, I really appreciate you. And I know this year hasn't been easy. And, um, I'm sorry for that. But I just want the public to hear that I couldn't ask for a better year for this year. So, thank you.
And with that, I would like to turn it over to the city manager of West, um, to provide her comments and then I will wrap up the lead.
Thank you, Mayor Council. You know, I talk about city staff till the cows come home. Talking about me and what I do is a little harder. Um, so I prepared something and I apologize. I'm reading it. I'd rather talk to it, but it's a little bit harder for me to talk about me. In here, you're going to hear me talk about humble. You humble me. Thank you. Um, working with you all is incredible. Thank you. So, um, I want to acknowledge the review process and the work done by our senior resources director, Maggie Christensen, who presented the results of the staff review. Here's where you're going to hear me say humbled again. I was incredibly humbled when I read that every single department had rated my performance in the top two categories. That that kind of unanimous confidence reflects a team that's engaged, motivated and unified around shared values of integrity, service and respect. A team I am so incredibly proud to be a part of. I am very tough, but if you see a little bit of tear in my paws and giants, uh, but along all the wonderful, I need to also speak candidly about the challenges. Is those challenges affect the entire organization, not just me? There are times when the most difficult part of this job isn't the workload or the responsibility. It's the unnecessary distractions that pull energy, staff time and task pay your dollars away from what matters most, serving as a community. As difficult as this is, I feel I have to talk about the treatment my staff and I have received from one of our counselors and her collaborator at Tramart News. The cost to the city is too high to stay silent. This counselor has on multiple occasions violated our council rules and procedure by publicly criticizing and denigrating staff during meetings. She's repeatedly alleged conspiracies that simply do not exist. She filed a false and frivolous police report against me, an incident that was investigated and found to have absolutely no basis in fact. That report wasted staff time, consumed public resources and created a chilling effect on open and healthy dialogue. And I want to be clear, it was personally distressing and professionally damaging. Weaponizing the legal process against a public employee who is simply doing their job is unacceptable in any workplace. These actions don't just make it uncomfortable to do our jobs, they create a hostile work environment and undermine the trust residents place in this institution. Professionalism isn't defined by the absence of conflict. It's defined by how we respond to it. And I will continue to respond with integrity, transparency and respect for both the law and the truth. We've also faced ongoing issues from the blogger at Tramart News, a self-published newsletter where she is the publisher, editor and self-described reporter. Her conduct has imposed real and medical costs on the city. In just the past two months, we've spent roughly five thousand dollars in staff and interning time responding to her public records requests, grievances and annoying emails. We've begun to enforce our fee schedule and we did receive thirteen hundred dollars from Tramart News. The remaining cost thirty seven hundred dollars to cover by our taxpayers. That's not an abstract number. It equals time and public dollars. If the same case continues, we're looking at around twenty-two thousand dollars a year. With that money, we could buy new books or the library, install a dozen benches in our parks, replace failing servers that delay city operations. Instead, those resources are being pulled into defending against a campaign of misinformation and harassment disguised as journalism. Speaking of harassment, we've all heard the bathroom story from Tramart News more than a few times. Yep, she chased me into the bathroom. Yep, I lost my temper because of it. Yes, I apologized for losing my temper. And no, I never promised that my staff would respond to her emails. And that was two years ago. While people continue to dredge up the past, we're focusing on the future. We're doing the real work that keeps independents moving forward. We're doing the good work that overcomes negative noise. Because none of this noise defines who we are as a city. What defines us is the people, the staff, the volunteers, the residents and the partners who made Independence the extraordinary community that it is. I chose to come here. I was recruited from another city that I loved and I came here because I believe in Independence, its energy, its potential, its heart. And I was right. This community is filled with people who step up, who care and who show up when it matters most. Our volunteers, our civic groups and our business owners bring to this community life every single day. My staff are exceptional. We're a lean organization, often working beyond capacity, but we continue to deliver results for our community. This is a team that takes care of each other, that solves problems together and that gives their very best to this community that they serve. And I want to highlight just some of what we've achieved together over the last three years I've been here, because these are their accomplishments, not mine alone. You know, there's a saying, when you're a leader, you're no longer responsible for doing the job. You're now responsible for inspiring, coaching, mentoring and motivating your team to produce their very best work. My team produces only their best work. I said it before, I'm going to say it again. They are incredible. So in the last three years, we have, and most of this has been last year, but we've implemented a new agenda management and public records system, making our processes faster, more transparent and more accessible. We've completely revised the city's budget, transforming it from a spreadsheet into a readable narrative, a story of the city that anyone can understand. We've received a grant to partner with HUD's technical assistance program for a deep dive into the city's financial systems, including the urban renewal agency and the general fund. We've strengthened our leadership team with the addition of the new city reporter, a new police chief, a new finance director and even a city engineer. We're building stability and accountability. We've advanced the regional water treatment plant partnership with Monmouth and Bull County, an investment that will provide sustainable quality water for our community for decades. We've secured grants, you heard Sean talked about them, and low interest loans for water sewer and stream improvements. We've moved forward on the Chestnut Bridge project, which will support long-term growth. As Sean said, in just three years, we've secured nearly twenty-three million dollars, well, nearly twenty-four actually, in grants, direct awards and low interest loans across all departments. These funds have supported projects in infrastructure, economic development, youth, public safety and community building. Every one of these dollars multiplies the impact of local revenue and reduces the burden on our other funds. In economic development, we've supported permanent spasos, helping to bring new in-home childcare to our former childcare desert. We've expanded economic development efforts to attract businesses and strengthen our downtown core. And in community enrichment and engagement, we completed the veterans exhibit at the museum with an interactive kiosk for visitors and search for local service members by name or era. We've supported our youth coding league, where one of our teams proudly took first class fall. We secured grant funding for the book bank and other creative wonderful projects. We've expanded communications, reaching thousands more residents through videos, newsletters and social media. We've hosted budget during sessions, town halls and videos to make our budgeting process transparent and accessible to all. These accomplishments reflect the collective effort of a high functioning, ethical and inspired organization, one that's moving Independence forward every single day. I also want to acknowledge the council as a whole. Even though I felt I had to raise concerns about treatment of myself and my staff, I have a deep respect for each of you and the dedication you bring to this work. You care about this city and that shows. I know it's been long, but I want to close and I want to share a few words of gratitude to my staff. Thank you. Even with limited resources and constant demands, you continue to deliver excellence. You support each other, you serve as community with pride and you make Independence stronger every day. To the council, Mayor Kate, your calm and transparent leadership sets the tone for all of us. Counselor Corr. Your thoughtfulness and diligence make a difference every day. Counselor Martin, you're not here, but I know you're watching. Your collaboration and long service are invaluable. Counselor Martin Willis, your strength and courage are evident in every. Counselor Valverde, your clarity and focus is grounded. Counselor Roden, your engagement reflects your commitment to your constituents. Counselor Source, your focus on equity challenges us to continually improve. And to the community, independence is not defined by division or negativity. It's defined by neighbors who lift each other up. People like Becky McCutcheon, Erin McIntyre, Bradley Carpenin, Nathan Christensen, Patrick Fugman, Erin Seider and the Falconian and so many others who give their time and bring light to this city. They represent the very best of what independence is. Even when negative noises laugh, the kindness, collaboration and heart of Independence rise above. That's the spirit that drew me here and that's the spirit that will help to keep this community moving forward. Thank you for letting me do this.
Thank you. And in closing, um, while tonight may have been prompted by unfortunate circumstances, I hope what comes of it is a renewed understanding and appreciation for the professionals in our heart and dedication of our saving effort. This hasn't been an easy evening. It takes an incredible amount of courage to go through a performance review in public. And I want to again recognize the manager of West's steadfastness with such grace and professionalism. You've led this city with strength, heart and integrity, even through challenges that would discourage men. You've kept our staff focused, supported and proud of the work they do. And that says everything about the kind of leader you are. I also want to say thank you to our team, the people who show up every day to serve this community with dedication and care. It's now time to turn the page. We have important work to do, work that we will continue to move Independence forward. In closing, I have one simple ask of our community. Support your city by choosing optimism. Engage with us respectfully. Celebrate the good work that's happening all around you. And when you hear misinformation, take a moment to ask questions, look at the facts and please talk to us directly. Thank you, city manager West, for your leadership, your resilience and your hearts. We are truly grateful for you and I look forward to closing out this chapter and moving on with the continued great work that we do. So, thank you. With that, do you have an action item in front of us?
I believe that the city council accept the twenty twenty-five city manager employee survey report as presented and authorize the five percent performance based salary increase for the city manager effective October twenty-two, twenty twenty-five.
Second, we have a first by Counselor Corr and a second by Counselor Martin Willis to be a further discussion. And now, still.
Counselor Source.
Aye.
Counselor Roden propose. Counselor Valverde.
Aye.
Counselor Mark Willis.
Aye.
Counselor Corr.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Um, I do want to offer the opportunity for Counselor Madison. Counselor Cole.
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. You mentioned turning the page. I'd like to make some comments regarding that. We were elected to serve this community by making responsible policy decisions. Our focus must remain on this mandate, free from personal agendas. A critical component of effective governance is respecting and utilizing the expertise of our professional staff. We must avoid challenging their professional credentials or creating an adversarial relationship. We should be thankful for the experience they bring to our important work. In recent months, allegations have been made against our communications director Emmanuel Gociaia and our city manager Kana West. While the right to file a complaint is absolute, I believe that many matters could be resolved with less burdensome means than involving law enforcement. Allowing our police agencies to focus on critical public safety issues. This is particularly important considering one complaint and falsely claimed an interaction resulted in an injury. Moving forward, I urge this council and the public to acknowledge the integrity and professionalism of our city employees. They are valuable partners who dedicate themselves to supporting our work and the community. Let us operate on the principle that staff acts with the best of intentions and a formal complaint should be reserved as an absolute last resort. Our collective focus must return to policy, not personnel disputes. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Other councilwoman. Uh, I was gonna make a resolution tonight that we could all hopefully agree to, but that wasn't allowed. And so I'm not going to read the.
Counselor Roden, you didn't get my email that said you can't absolutely. Better council announcement.
And you, yeah, you said, you said I could read it as an announcement, but I was hoping we could actually vote on it. So that's not, so that's why I'm not going to read it. Instead, for my council announcement, instead of honoring Charlie Kirk, which I think we should and be civil towards each other, I think it should, um, if anybody's listening, Lebanon High School is trying to get a grant for their condemned football stadium. I asked the city today, they could put this out on the city website so that people could vote on it. They're just a few thousand votes behind a school in Arkansas. So it would be so great if the city could promote Lebanon High School because they really literally have a building that's been, that's condemned and the kids cannot play. And they're the only school in Oregon that's in the running for this grant. And it requires people to vote and it takes about twelve seconds. Put in your email address, click that you're a human, you click submit. And whatever email address you have, I have multiple. It's totally legal. You just can do invoke every email address once per day. So if anybody hears me and wants to listen to this, please, let's, let's win this for an Oregon high school, get this out to our communities. I feel horrible that they have no place for their kids to sit and stand. And if we can do this and rally behind Lebanon High School.
Uh, I echo what Counselor Roden said. In fact, he is a coach of that football team because of him a lot. So local connection and that will lead to people a little more. Uh, in addition, this weekend is homecoming at Western Oregon University. So there's a number of events this weekend, including the homecoming football game. So I encourage our beauty to come out and support. Um, and I also want to just give a shout out to the Super High.
Um, and I also want to just give a shout out to the Super Pie, um, event over at the Monmouth, and I know you guys have talked about Monmouth, but it's our senior center now. So the Monmouth Senior Center, it's their annual Super Pie fundraiser. It's always a great time, and it's Thursday, October twenty-third, from eleven to one-thirty. Cards, hash and check, so let's hope to see some people open.
Alright, thank you so much. Thank you for the announcements.
Will Fisher.
I'm to adjourn at eight oh seven, thank you very much.